Commissioner Turnquist, do you have any comments for Commissioner Comments?
I do. Sorry for the delay. I couldn't hear anything until just now. Okay, so at our la- when our last meeting ended, due to the power outage, as part of the discussion on parking meters, we didn't have an opportunity to talk about the ordinance that limits parking to two hours on Main Street where no meters exist. So I'd like to request that we add to our next agenda to have a discussion on amending the ordinance to allow for 24-hour parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Turnquist. Commissioner Sweeney?
I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Hoover?
I'm good at this time.
Okay, and before we get to our mayor's comments, I have a little blurb that I wanted to read as far as our purpose of our workshop unless Mr. Mayor doesn't make sense to have you go first with that. I had a little blurb to kind of set the stage. All right. Okay, so I appreciate everyone's participation here today as we dive into our town's finances. This workshop was designed with a specific purpose, and that is to conduct a comprehensive review of our town's finances, bank accounts, funds, allocation of money. Our goal is to foster a collaborative environment where the mayor, the council, and the staff, and certainly public feedback, we can collectively brainstorm and generate innovative ideas. And we hope to answer questions such as, what funds does the town currently have? How have funds historically been allocated? And does that structure still work given our current financial situation? If we change the structure of how our finances are allocated, can we hopefully alleviate our water fund, and if so, by how much? So the focus of our discussion might generate more questions and hypothetical scenarios than answers tonight, but hopefully those questions will lead to potential solutions and strategies that we could, that we face together as a town and assist us in identifying future priorities and projects. Mr. Mayor and council members and town staff, your insights, expertise, and creativity are invaluable in this process. And likewise, we share the public to for feedback in with your ideas as well through our town email address or through public comment at a regular meeting. And with that said, let us, after mayor comments, engage in open and constructive dialogue and work together to pave the way for a prosperous, prosperous future for our town. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, everybody, for taking an extra night out of your schedules to, for this month to be here, but I think this is real important to get a good hand on our finances or at least take the first step. But before we get into that, just a couple of quick notes. Last meeting when the generator went out, it was all the, the culprit was a nine-volt battery. A nine-volt battery runs the brains of the computer, of the generator. And that battery was dead, and when the power went out, the generator brain didn't say come on, even though it was running. So a nine-volt battery runs the whole generator. So we have upped the maintenance schedule on changing that battery. So that's kind of funny. Generator runs its whole building, was governed by a nine-volt battery. But anyway, a quick shout out to the town of Thurmont. They have been gracious enough to lend us one of their employees to help us here in the office when, with our new accountant. And then we had a staff member go fall ill. We were kind of running short, and Thurmont was gracious enough to send Cole back for a couple of days, for a couple of hours a day, and give us a hand to get things going. So that really has helped Kim also. And so we'd like just to thank them. I want to thank all the citizens for their cooperation with the snow emergency plan. We've had a couple of hiccups. We've had a couple notifications have still been, been a problem, even though we have done everything but send up smoke signals to get this information out to the public. But it's working. We have some ideas on how to get out to people in a few different ways, and we're going to be working on that. But all in all, especially Main Street has been doing great. But some of the neighborhood still has some issues, but we're going to continue to work on that. And the president pretty much spoke about the workshop, everything I was going to say. So thank you so much for that. So let's get down to business.
Thank you. And I understand we don't necessarily have a set presentation for tonight. So what I was, had in mind as commissioners, we did ask the town for a lot of information over the last couple of months or so. And we have lots and lots of information in front of us to go through. So having said that, I know everybody, each person may have a place that they would like to target or to start. Can we list out those particular topics now, and we can take them one at a time versus just kind of having a scattered approach of where we want to go? Sounds good. So which topic would we like? I know some of the ones was, we had general overview of how we allocate our funds with not only salaries and historical water and sewer rates were on there. We had how we allocate to different departments and things like that. Does anybody want to start?
I think a quick one that you might want to take a look at is the one pager with the water and sewer fund balances. Had Kim put that together and the first two columns is what our balance was for each of the different funds, the water sewer, water sewer and the ARPA fund. And then we broke it out by, by physical years. And FY24, of course, we're still in the middle of it. But the, the water fund is the one that came to my attention. You can see that we were, we were getting pretty low in funds. And you got to remember, we did put 300,000 into that fund this year out of ARPA money. But just with the increase of the first quarter water rates, you see that we did take almost a $60,000 jump there. So of course, you know, it's not the whole year picture, but that, that initial jump sure, sure did help to get get that balance up a little bit.
And then ARPA fund is the majority of that money, right?
The second line there is the ARPA fund.
So FY24, 361, that 300,000 is the
It came, it came out of there, yes. I guess it was 50,000, I guess we is what we, we were able to jump that first, the first quarter of water funds.
So then FY22 was the actual end in balance of the water fund that rolled over to 23?
Yes, yes.
And the 6, 10,000 change rolled over to
And I was totally shocked by the difference between water and sewer.
Yeah, it's a lot, but a lot, I guess. substantially different.
Is there a reason for the sewer decline between FY23 and looking at FY24? Or is it because the year's not?
It's more than likely. It's because we've had to put out money for the pump station since our, our town contribution is approximately 1.4 million dollars. And we've already contributed, I think I'd have to go back and look, but it's about 178,000.
That would make sense.
And also when the pump station went down a couple weeks ago.
We had, yeah, right around Thanksgiving?
Yeah, we had to pull funds out for the contractors to come in and get that pumped out and get it all, all the way.
Okay, thank you. As far as that document goes, do we have any other questions pertaining to that document?
And the town manager did also added a page that breaks down the ARPA funding where that is all committed to.
Should be right behind the first set of, I think, salaries.
Yeah, the eight and a half by 14 pages.
I do have a question about that first spreadsheet. When there's remaining money in the water or sewer fund at the end of each fiscal year, do we then roll that remaining balance into the enterprise SIP fund? It rolls into your, your fund balance or your cash balance. And then we take those reserves and we use it to budget the capital improvement projects for water and sewer. And the cash reserves aren't reflected in the enterprise SIP budget, correct? It is. If you look at your budget, your cash reserves is, so in fiscal year 23, we had cash reserves in the amount of 8,92,097 dollars at the beginning of that budget year. That's a combination of water and sewer. And then we use the, excuse me, the tap fees we estimate, estimate, and the ARPA monies to come up with a total revenue. And then in your CIP budget, we, we subtract out all your debt service to come up with your total cash available. And from there, then we project projects, have projects projected out till fiscal year 29. It needs updated. And we subtract off of that cash balance for the CIP for water and sewer. Okay, so remaining money from water and sewers rolled into cash reserves, which is reflected in the enterprise SIP budget?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So are any questions on the ARPA designations? Basically, you started with 3.152 million. And then the majority of that is going to your water clarifier, which I'm not sure if anybody's aware, just went out to bid last week for construction. That takes up the most, most of your ARPA money. And then you have some of the, it's going to come for some of the loan for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline project. It will cover all of the DePaul Street Waterline Replacement Phase One and Phase Two, the loan, and then Phase Two was not covered under the grant or the loan. So that's going to be an out-of-pocket expense. So we're going to utilize ARPA money for that. And that's how we came up to, to the 3.152 million. All monies have to be obligated by June 30th, 2024 of this year. Basically, that means all your construction, all your contracts have to be signed. And basically, the mon- the money has been obligated. So this is kind of our final one ARPA.
Any other questions on that spreadsheet? So it looks like we have everything designated. There's, you don't have to worry about, worry the other, okay?
Correct, all right. Perfect. As you can see, it all went to your water fund as well.
Yeah, that was very helpful. All right, thank you.
So then for those monies that have to be allocated by a signed contract or a contract?
Right.
Where are we at with those individual?
So the, whoops. The clarifier just went out to bid. The board should have that RFP bid to you by April, at your April meeting. Your DePaul Street Waterline, you will get that in March. And then the North Seaton Avenue Waterline, that's where we're kind of pushing it on that one, but we should have that to you by the end of, like, the beginning of June.
Phase one and phase two of DePaul Street?
Yes.
He gives us plenty time to look at them and getting questions.
Does it make sense to dive into historical water and sewer rates, since we're talking about that, or?
So that packet you have there, this was my best abilities to pull numbers together, digging through old ordinances and minutes. And this was the best historically that I could come up with based off of some old minutes and ordinances. As you can see, under your water rates, the minimum charge has always been 6,000 gallons. And it's broken out. I went far back as I could find, which would have been 2002. And you'll see your, your rates at three-quarters meter, a one-inch meter, one and a half meter, two-inch, three-inch, and six-inch. And you'll see that the rate was increased in 2002 from 30, or in 2005, from 30 to 3250. And 2006, it went from 3250 to 35. And then from 2006 until 2020, 2023, it remained at $35. That was the way it was across the board. For some reason, in 2005, they dropped the one and a half meter off the ordinance. But they still, I don't know why, don't have that information. And then you'll see the overage charges. 2002, 2005, they billed overages from 6,001 gallons to 20,000 gallons. And then 20,001 to 100,000. In 2006, the board added the second column of 10,001 gallons to 20,000. As you can see, it remained $2.40 for your first, for your 6,001 to 6,000, or to 10,000 at $2.40 pretty much from 2002 to 2023. In 2002 to 2008, the town charged different rates for in and out of town. When rates changed in 2008, town, town no longer had different rates for in and out of town. And then just a note, the town built, used to bill semi-annually until 2003. So that's your historic water. On the second page are your historical sewer rates. In 1997, the 12,000, it was a 12,000 gallon minimum for in-town limits. Again, they, they had separate rates for in-town and out of town up until 2008. And then in 1998, they went to a 6,000 gallon minimum for in-town limits. You can see the rates, 1998 and 2001. That was when they were billing semi-annually. In 2003, they started with the quarterly billing. And you can see the rates from 2003 all the way up to 2023. In 01, 03, 05, and 06, rates were increased for out-of-town users. I do not have the chart, the overage chart for sewage. I just ran out of time.
So do you happen to know, I'm sorry, when we changed the rates in 2008 for water, so the town no longer had different rates for in and out of town, does that mean out-of-town was paying in-town rates?
No, out-of-town would have been paying a higher rate.
Right. So then would it be, they would have, I would, we dropped into in-town rates?
No, we no longer, oh, yes, they went down to
Same rate.
Same rate. But then I believe it was at the same time, and I'm sure Commissioner Hoover could correct me, I believe that's the same time they passed an ordinance where they don't allow, we, we stopped allowing connections outside of town for water and sewer. So about that time?
That's true also. That's also the, the enterprise fund was, was the real reason why we, there was no longer in-town, out-of-town rate because everybody contribute. And there was new tax money being contributed to the sewer and water, or vice versa. So it was just enterprise fund only. Also, we stopped, I think it was a little bit later, we stopped taking any out-of-town about any new connections out of town. They had to annex to get sewer or water, unless they already had it.
I can
And there's a couple of them still do have it.
Right. I can find that information when that stopped.
Your largest users out of town.
Okay.
Also, Kathy, one to one where the semi-annual, I'm pretty, pretty sure, 99% certain, that was only for your sewer and sewer and trash was, was semi-annual. Water still would have been quarterly.
Okay.
State law up to 2000, up until 2008. It was 2008, yeah, 2008, up, up to 2008, state law was, everybody had to
Mr. Hoover? No, water. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm hearing, trying using your microphone a little bit more closely, I think folks are having trouble.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, sir.
So in 2008, they changed the law, the state law, that water could be charged, actually the monthly. Maybe that's when they had the big stock market crash and all that.
Right, okay.
But up until then, it was state law that you had to charge water quarterly. But your sewer, your sewer and trash was a semi-annual.
All right, thank you.
So that's going to kind of offset your numbers here probably soon.
Right.
I'm sure for the better or worse. My other time. Does that mean I'm out of time?
No, that means I mean, no, do you have additional questions about this particular document or anything as it relates?
I have some questions or, or, or comments about the FY24 water and sewer rate increase. Are we going to review a document for that separately? Or is now a good time?
Was that on that first spreadsheet that gave us the overview? Are you talking about that? What we, what it looks like so far this year?
Uh, no, basically, the water and sewer rate increases that were passed for FY24. Well, there, there would be the year 2023, that's your fiscal year 24 rates for water and your overage for water. And then on the second page would be your sewer rates that were adopted with, and that took effect this fiscal year. Okay, I have some comments to share. So when we were first, I mean, back, I guess last June, May or June, when, when the board was, you know, discussing the 36% rate increase for water. I don't think I had a full understanding at that time of, of what those rate increases would look like across the board. So I, I took some time today to just put together my own spreadsheet to see what, what the rate increases would look like at, at the various meter sizes. And the things that stuck out are kind of alarming. So for, for water, so for the first 6,000 gallons, we know the rate increase was 36% per year for five years. But over the three-quarter inch meter, the, the rates actually increased quite a bit, and they range from 36% to 217% in FY24. And, and those percentages of increases are based on the meter size. So the larger meter you have, you know, the larger increase. So 217% in one fiscal year is quite a lot. And then the rate per 1,000 gallons over the minimum, the increases range from 36% to 63% in FY24. The five-year cumulative increase for some meter sizes is almost 1,000%. For sewer increases for FY24, the ranges go from 3% to 255%, depending on meter size. In the five-year period, hold on. So I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned that, you know, what we may have sold as a 36% and 3% increase, you know, for the different funds is quite high for some of our meter sizes, which will probably have the biggest impact on our businesses. So I, I think we're going to have to look at that carefully as we move forward.
Do we know where our two-inch, three-inch, and six-inch, how many of those we even, we have in town, like, percentage-wise, or I have no clue how many of each we have?
I actually have an entire packet on my desk that lists out all the meter sizes. I haven't gone through and said, there's this many three-quarters. That is something that I can do. It's a quite large spreadsheet, so it's just a matter of organizing the numbers. So that's something that I can get back to the board if they want to break down on how many consumers are in each meter size.
Okay.
The, the one thing to take into consideration when you're talking about meter sizes, if you had to put, say you only use 10,000 gallons a quarter, but you had to put in a larger meter due to fire protection, to have sprinklers and such, we do not charge that, that rate for the two-inch meter. If it has to do with fire protection and not your water usage, that's, that's waived. So a lot of the businesses that have the two-inch meters, most of them unfortunately are nonprofits. They're not charged that higher rate.
So then Kathy, I guess in that chart that you have, that would show a two-inch meter for a smaller business or maybe even residential. But it really would, but the, would they be charged for, probably three-quarter or one inch, I guess?
Right, so I could, um, yes, so I can go and figure out how many customers are under each meter size. And then if they do have a sprinkler system, see what, you know, what they're actually being charged for, and that would be done through the, the water billing system.
Yeah, it was a clinic, Seaton Center, St. Joseph's Parish Hall. It was, it was, I think, I think 100% of them were nonprofits.
So they're only getting charged the three-quarter inch rate?
No, I think they are getting charged either the one or one and a half. Because actually, if you charge them the three-quarter inch rate, they'd have been paying less than their, their current rate before the increase.
Yeah, it's, it's, their charge, what their building was designed for.
Right.
On what their flows were, not
Right. And we, we dealt with them through phone calls and meetings. And we, we dealt with them, uh, through phone calls and meetings, and they were all very, uh, they were very pleased with, with the outcome.
Jay, will you show that on the report when you get it all done? Which ones are reduced and stuff, so we know how many was been reduced?
Which ones are waived? I guess if it's reflected as a, a two inch meter, but they're being charged.
Is that income not coming in?
Okay.
Less water income, correct? If you're wa- we're waiving that fee, that's, that's what our income are taking.
No, they actually got an increase also. Uh, they, they, nobody got, is paying less. Everybody's paying more. But, uh, for example, uh, let me you try to use Seaton Center. I think they went from like four hundred dollars to sixteen hundred dollars. But when we reduced it back down, they, they're now paying like six hundred dollars. So they had a two hundred dollar increase, which they were fine with.
Right.
So if they upgraded their line in order to put in the sprinklers for fire safety, but it's only there in the event of fire safety. Okay, so that makes.
Then they would, then they would play with plumbing code requires for the act, like Kathy said, the actual flow of.
Sure.
And, and that was done years ago. This is nothing that, that we did.
No, I mean, that makes.
Because those people hear fire, they think, I did it, I didn't do it.
No, I mean, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense.
That's been there a long time, Mr. Mayor.
Stop in the process of going out and review and, and actually visit visually looking at all meters on the commercial institutional side, not residential, because we, we're fairly certain ninety-nine percent of residential has a three quarter inch meter. Um, so we're out visually inspecting all the meters to make sure that our records are correct of what is in there. That's not been done in my time. It's a lengthy process, um, but we are working on it.
Does that have a, a timeline too? I remember you mentioning it before, like this is a big, came above, it's a big undertaking that.
It is a big undertaking. Unfortunately, with the amount of snow we've received and, and some other issues, it's kind of, it's not on the back burner. They're working through it. It's just not a quick process.
Yeah. I didn't know if you had a, a hard deadline from the state or anything like that, that you had to report.
No, no, that's, that's something different. That's the lead line inventory. Yeah. That deadlines sometime this year.
Thank you for clarifying.
And I think we're going to revisit that, uh, in February at the mayor's conference in Indianapolis. Because a lot of the municipalities are coming up with, uh, having problems meeting that deadline. Because they have certain contractors that will come out and help you with that, and they're all booked solid. So there's nobody else to come out and help get that accomplished. So they, it's another one of those, uh, state unfunded mandates. That, uh, they didn't think it the whole way through when they enacted that. So we'll be talking about that the end of February in Indianapolis.
Kathy, you may find several residential properties that had that larger, good, Brookfield particularly.
Right. Yeah, that, again, I have that spreadsheet there, but yeah, there are some, what we're less concerned about inaccuracy, inaccuracies with residential as opposed to some of the commercial or, or, you know, and the institutions that have been here for quite a long time.
We had some elevation issues with Brookfield for water pressure, so you may find a much larger line there.
Okay.
Yeah, our ordinance does say when installation of a fire service meter is required to service a sprinkler system, where otherwise a smaller line would be sufficient to service the facility, then an alternate minimum charge may be assessed as recommended by staff and approved by the mayor and the board of commissioners. So I think it would, as you mentioned, be helpful to see what those alternate rates are that are being charged.
Yeah, I can, I know I have ten of them that I can get to you that came to our, uh, attention when the first quarter bill went out. So that's, that's an easy one for me. I can, I'll take that one off your shoulders, Kathy. Just remind me.
Another quick comment about this chart, the, um, the, the two dollars and forty cents that, that was, that was around forever. That was an intended purpose, uh, because that rate is what, is what, um, is within the Mount St. Mary College, um, contract. Whatever we charge for the lowest is what we buy for them. So by changing that up to three twenty-six, we increased our, our own cost of buying that water.
Right.
So that was one of the factors and why that stayed where it was. And that's how it went from ten thousand to six thousand gallons to get, to have a lower number for rent, for senior citizens, the elderly to use very, very little bit of water, and also to have a very, very low rate for them at the same time, room personal benefits. Control our own destiny somewhat.
Also be, previously the minimum was, was ten thousand and not six thousand?
I think it originally was twelve, then it went to ten, then we made a six thousand in there.
Okay.
It was twelve many years ago, probably about nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, somewhere around there from what I read.
Okay. And are we, um, are we back to buying water from Mount St. Mary yet, or there's still?
Uh, no, we're not, but, um, I've been in contact with President Trainer on a weekly basis. And he's given me updates. They're, they're still waiting on their engineers to redesign their, their plant. But they, they want to try to get us, they're also looking to drill more wells and, uh, things like that. So we hope to get back in. Cause it's, it's a, it's a big backup for us. If something major would go with our line on the mountain, at least that gets us water to the residents.
Right.
Or if we have a big fire. And they're done up. Sorry, buddy.
I know that, um, I had previously seen a, a water assessment that was, I don't know, probably from the early two thousands, and it had, um, identified where our wells were in some of our reservoirs. And in some cases, that there was reservoirs designated that I didn't know we had. So I don't know if that's still accurate. And I don't want to go down that rabbit hole tonight. But, um, I think it's worth, at least for me, getting a general understanding in the future as far as where are the wells and our reservoirs and what we have available to us.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to disclose the location of our wells in a public meeting. So, um, anytime anybody wants to come in for a, a meeting or, or wants me to send them additional information, I have no problem doing that. Just for safety purposes, um, but absolutely. And, and I know Mayor Davis has asked staff to put together a bunch of information so that he has a binder to give all the commissioners on that exact information.
Oh, perfect. All right, thank you. All right.
I've got a question. I guess I should know the answer, but I don't. Does anyone know why we charge by meter size and not by gallons used?
Not about the rate of flow, it's the rate of flow.
It's still the same amount of water.
Yeah.
A gallon's a gallon.
And, and I'm good going by the, the, the city of Tawny Town, they just charge a, a flat out rate. And I think once our accountant gets her feet wet and gets settled into her position next week. No, just kidding. Um, I, I'd, I'd like to see a study on that to see if, if this, you know, where we would be if we didn't charge by meter size and just strictly did by the gallon, because it's, it's a nightmare for our staff to do billing.
Well.
I don't have the answer for you.
Yeah, that's worth looking into.
You know, I'll, I'll say we inherited the process like from fifteen years ago approximately. I would suggest to ask staff to consider talking to MML to share the burden of the research. And that MML might already have a database, or it might be worth having them create that database, and that would unburden staff perhaps. So just a thought.
And did you say it was Tawny Town who was currently?
Yeah, Tawny Town.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Tawny Town doesn't. I think somewhere, if you want to keep talking, I think I have that read on my phone somewhere.
Or, I mean, it also might be worth reaching out to Tawny Town too, um, in addition to MML, so that.
I mean, there is some added size because the, I mean, the, the size of the, of the line, of course, you know, whatever, whatever we had to fix um, has to be a larger pipe or whatever, but for a three quarter to a one, to a one inch or an inch and a quarter or something like that, it's not going to make a big difference. The meter would be a little more expensive, but that's a one-time cost.
I think we talked about this in the past. I think the question had come up, why does it cost more for six thousand gallons for a larger meter? And I recall somebody saying it's because of the flow, the force of the flow that has to go through the larger meters puts more pressure on our system. I don't know if that's true or not, but I recall hearing that from someone. And I noticed that we only charge, um, for the first six thousand gallons of water. The, the rates are different for all the meter sizes, but once you get into the higher tiers of water usage, the rates are the same for all meter sizes. So that kind of negates my comment about why the rates are higher. If you use more than six thousand gallons, your rate is the same regardless of your meter size. And I don't know why that is.
I don't either, but I think, I think Commissioner Donald's got a good idea. The MML probably has some studies or charts or what other municipalities are doing, but generally I'm pretty sure across the board, and this town is, this town is typically your meter size could, is your, is your controlling factor. I don't, I, I don't think it has anything to do with flow, whether, whether they, whether it's said that way or not, I don't. I mean, the town has a ten inch pipe coming down, down the mountain, has X amount of pressure and.
Well, I use the distillery, for example. Um, when we looked at their flows, what they, what, what flow they needed to operate, it was a flow that we all thought a, a lower size line could accommodate. However, they want a larger line because they need a faster flow to come in. Basically to fill their tank. And so that's why they need, and it's what their engineer said, why they need a larger line, a larger meter. It's the, it's the, the ability to get water faster.
More flow, more product.
Correct. So that's why you ultimately charge more because the impact on the system, when you turn the, the rate of flow up high, it has a greater impact on the system. You know, it takes more water out of the storage tank, it's quicker that way. That's my understanding of it, whether it's, you know, like I said, this is the way they've always done it, so that we've just kind of followed it. Not saying it's right, not saying it's wrong. Um, I have seen that there are other municipalities that charge just off of usage. There are other use municipalities that build the same way do, we do. It's all in what, what the board wants.
What works for you.
What works for the town. And each town's unique.
I mean, because even like the distillery, they're giving it fed off, what, off an eight or ten inch to begin with, and then it branches off to whatever they got it.
Right.
A one inch or two inch or, and if they want to go, if they want to go from a, to a larger pipe, then they would have to come out to the main and put a new one in.
Correct.
But we would be responsible for that larger pipe from the main to the meter.
Yes.
Which, which is not substantially much.
We would go from the main to the property line, right? They pick up from the property line.
For, for what, for sewer?
Oh, for sewer, sewer, yes. Sure, yes.
To the meter for the water.
Additional questions about this document? Commissioner Turnquist, I can't see you, so I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm good.
Yeah, I guess the one thing, like I said, did jump out to me where we have made a nice little increase in our, in our water fund. We're still a long ways off from, from the, the sewer fund. So I'm really anxious to see what it would be at the end of the fiscal year and to see if this is going to stay. Stay at this pace. Because it, it is a nice little jump every quarter. So hopefully we, we, in the future, we'd be able to, to readjust our, our water rates.
Um, sorry, go ahead.
That's a good segue for my comment.
There you go.
So I, I, I agree with what you say, Mr. Mayor, and, um, and based on what you just said is, is what it does at the end of the, this year, next year, following here. At some point, I want to get to the point that the rate that we have now, the thirty-six percent for the next consecutive five years, well, four years remaining, I like to make it to where, I know we can't do it tonight, but just something everybody to think about is where an action has to be taken by this board to reapprove that rate each year. Reevaluate and reapprove it. It's just that I looked at the report now, can't say everybody word for word, but I looked through it and whatever, and I just, I still, I, I did not see where it really went down to say thirty-six percent for the next five consecutive years. I did see three years at forty percent actually. Uh, but I looked at more and more, um, and as I brought up once before, the tap fee connections have gone down. And as this report says, page four, and that was the, um, the, the, um, the rate study recommendation report that I, that I'm referring to. Uh, because no, your connection fees are set as low, set le- less than cost or anticipated growth does not occur. Existing customers will have to make up for the differences at a higher usual rate. And I think that's exactly where we're at. Connection fees are now eight thousand, I think, eight thousand and eighty-two hundred or something like that.
That's right.
Which are, which are less than an actual, the actual cost of a tap. And that's why I want to kind of get to where we look at it and look at the rates and evaluate those. So we've, so in my opinion, anyway, we have decreased the, you, the connection fees on a developer. And in consequences, we've had to increase not a hundred percent of the cause, but we've had to increase our rates to compensate for our loss in connection tap fees.
Our, our problem is we haven't had any. We, we've had no.
Well, that's not, that's not.
We've had very, very, very little growth.
In the last year or two, but, but prior to that, you, you, the, the market was well and Brookfield particularly was, it sold a lot of houses. But over the last five, six years, there's been a lot of sale in tap fees collectively over the last five or six years. And depending on how the market goes over the next, next five or six years. Reducing the rate when the connection fee, when the, when the connection costs more than what we're charging for it. Whether there's sales or no sales. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
Question. Mr. Hoover, I really like your idea of coming back to review the rates with a, a set frequency. The only thing I'm going to ask, and it's, it's not a view, but it's to staff, is there a value to having a longer window for long-term planning? Like, for example, a two-year window. I, I, I don't know if one's too short or two's too long, um, but for the purposes of projecting budgets a little bit further out.
Right.
Is there any?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, the longer the, the more data that you have, the easier it is to plan. Um, when we do apply for funding through the various agencies, they do like to look at our, our budgets and our anticipated rates. They always ask for what our current rates are. Um, it helps us plan. Uh, I do understand the idea of not having a five-year window. I mean, me personally and for staff level for planning two years would be better than one year. Just for planning purposes and being able to, to know kind of what you can expect for the next two years and help plan some of those long-term projects.
I could probably be persuaded to the two-year after this year. I'd like to do it again this year though. And then do two and two or whatever. I can probably be persuaded to that. But like I say, I want to get this year through first and, and look at it.
So is that something we want to look at for a future agenda item? Potentially.
Yeah, just as a, a side note, uh, the office has received very few, uh, complaints or, or phone calls after the, the increase took place. Uh, the funny part is some of the loudest voices. I, I did go and, and look at their bills, and, uh, their, their increase per quarter was somewhere between ten and fifteen dollars. So is, which is about fifteen, twenty cents a day. And that's the first increase they've had since two thousand and six. So when you, when you look at it that way. So when you when you look at it that way, I'm sure there's other people that had a little bit larger increases, but it looks like the average increase. Is about fifteen dollars a quarter. So that's since two thousand and six, I don't think, while I wanna see it not go five years also. That increase is not, you know, as bad as what. We thought it was gonna be.
Right, and and I and I hear you, and I don't disagree with it, there's sixty that that makes it sixty dollars a year. And if we go next year, that's gonna make it sixty plus another sixty plus the thirty six percent increase on top of that sixty, so. You know, we're gonna go from sixty hours to a hundred and twenty hours, probably probably closer to a hundred and fifty by the end of the second, by the end of the second year, I'm saying. Annually, a hundred and fifty.
I think what makes part of this difficult, too, is that there's so many different lines. And very different scenarios in each household, like, for example. Um we used to have a giant garden that we would water in the summertime. And that would obviously increase our water in those months. Which did, I mean, until then, we were. We were under the ten thousand. Gallon rate routinely, except for those summer months because of the garden. So I I guess it really depends on what you're doing outside and why are you washing your car, are you somebody who has a garden or? You know, so it's for somebody who may have a small increase. That may not be the same for somebody your next door neighbor who, so it it's really. It's really hard to get an accurate capture of how it impacts everybody.
And the next house beside you may have eight.
Right.
They use eight, six more times more water than what you use with two people.
Yeah, so it's so many different scenarios, it's really hard to capture. But I do agree that, you know, being able to to review it, look at it, see if. Um and I think that's part of our goal tonight is. Is there anything we can do creatively with our funds, or is there a way we can allocate the money in a way that would provide some relief to that water fund? That we could be looking at in the meantime, and I know that's where we had asked about. Looking at where what's being charged to the water fund. And maybe there's some creative solutions there. I don't know if that's a good segue into that section or not, does anybody have anything on that previous section that we were?
I I think to be fair, um you know, the fifteen dollar increase. It's it's only for somebody who who is charged the minimum usage of of six thousand gallons. You know, at at the thirty six percent rate for the three quarter inch meter, but if you have a larger meter. Your rate is gonna, your cost is gonna be much higher. Um I use probably twenty thousand gallons a quarter, and I know my bill went up, you know, a at least a hundred dollars. And and I think it was even more than that, uh you know, because we have a large household, so. I mean, I get, I think it would be useful to know how many households. Are at the six thousand gallon mark, and then how many are at the, you know, the ten to twenty? You know, that information would help us determine what our revenue is. You know, for those various meter sizes and the various usage tiers. That's awful on that thing.
Commissioner O'Donnell, did you have something I saw that you were reaching for your microphone?
Hold off, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. You gave us a lot of information, so thank you, like, it's it's overwhelming, so thank you. Do we wanna stay on the same topic and look at charges to the water fund, or do we wanna go over to some of our? While we're on that, um I mean, because that brings us to. Looking at home departments and how those are determined and things like that, and whether that could potentially. Effect our. Our water fund.
Let me just make one more comment on on the um the study, I think I was all I was one more on it. I noticed here on the one page, um combined combined water bill comparison. In the study, it's page nineteen, but. It it lists all the other different towns, not all different, many different towns, Chesapeake City, Elkton, Rising Sun, Kent County, Charleston, Emmsburg. Before and after. North Delaware. Uh but it lists those as comparison as the guest, I guess it was the intent was to show. Where we are in the in the in the in the playing field there. Again, my opinion is, you know, compares comparing us to another municipality to get water rates or compare our water rates is is. Is a bit unfair, I think, um what it costs for us to get water. And what it costs some other municipalities to get water is very different cost wise. And 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 just as close to us here with the mount, the mount has very good wells. They might have some problems with some right now, but they have some very good wells, the town of Emmsburg does not. So it's drilled wells many times and it's drilled, you know. Wells that receive ten, twelve gallons a minute and more mud and water, and that's why we store the reservoir, so for us to compare our. Our pricing compared to another one. Is, you know, could be a bit lopsided. Other municipalities may not cost as much as us, and their rates would be much lower. Whatever, for us to get water and for us for the amount of money we spend on backwash and filters and things of that nature. We have an added cost that some towns do not have, some towns do have, some towns have it better and some towns have it worse, so just that comparison chart. Can be a bit misleading, I believe.
So the only thing I'll add to that is part of what prompted all of this was um when we went to get funding from USDA. Several years ago. One of their comments was that we needed to take a look at our water rates because our water rates were not competitive. How they look at providing funding is looking at similar systems, similar costs. I don't know if those in the water rate study were ones that they would have used, she gave me a list of ones. For me to kinda look at as far as um. They kind of are in our group with similar systems, similar costs, medium household income, population. Um I can't remember one of the other variables, but that they do look at similar systems. Again, I don't I don't know if if this water rate was, if any of those towns in the water rate were considered similar systems by USDA or not. But he's absolutely correct, it's hard to compare one municipality to the other because there are a lot of variables.
Right, I mean, you look at Chesapeake City at the very top, it's seven hundred and fifty two dollars, you look at Aberdeen. At a hundred and ten dollars, so.
Do they, I mean, does USDA even know what they would consider, I mean, it sounds like they did give you some that they consider. Comparable to us.
Right, so they they are similar systems, she she rattled off a few towns. Um the one she uh she told me to work with Maryland Rural Water, they do a lot of this gathering of information. For um. Different municipalities.
I mean, even here right in town, if you look at the wells on the mountain and we look at well J. I mean, well, J is full of magnesium and it was gonna cost a substantial amount of money to bring that that well online, which is why we never did. Just depends on what's in that water. And like I said, the reason we have a reservoir is because we couldn't drill wells. Back when we done our water plant, back in oh three, oh two, oh three. We were supposed to get rid of the reservoir, but because we could not drill wells and find. A high enough volume of water, the M D E. Told us to keep the the reservoir, but if you look at other municipalities, they've all been pulled out, not all, but most of them have pulled out and gotten rid of. Because it's cost so much to treat reservoir water, river or well.
Why are we not allowed to drill more? Why do they say no to that?
They don't, they didn't want, they didn't want you to have any more reservoirs. Because the cost, because of the cost of treatment, and the M D E was giving you grant money, they wanted you to spend their money.
Gotcha.
Most cost effective. But we can't, we we were on, we were unfortunate and and I figured it may wells we had drilled, but we had drilled several of them to find nothing.
I see. Okay.
And that's why we're tied into the to the mount also is to. You know, to have that have that needed needed surplus as when needed.
And and I think the mount, the mount could be a uh a a savior to us if they're able to. Uh bring their water plant up. To get rid of the uh. The chemical. Because like I say, they're they're sitting on aqua out there, they they have more water, I don't know where it comes from.
The other side of mountain.
It's water, it's water everywhere. And uh that that could help us with a whole bunch of our problems.
They got that well sitting over there off of um Old Frederick Grove, a massive well.
Oh, it's it's crazy, there's there's one out there that if you go out there to fill up a a fire truck, it it's got so much pressure, it it'll sit there and just shake the truck. It's amazing.
I remember right, that thing done three hundred gallons a minute, if I remember right. It was massive, we tried to get that well one time. We weren't successful.
I had looked at the rates for Tawney Town and Mount Airy. And their rates were similar to ours or lower. I couldn't find the thermalt rates online.
Mount Airy was similar or lower to Emmsburg?
Yeah, Mount Airy and Tawney Town.
Yeah, and and unfortunately, there's a a lot of municipalities right now that are finding themselves in our same shoes. That's that's another issue. It just seems like this, this is a common occurrence throughout municipalities, I don't know why, but this, right now, it seems to be a common occurrence.
Um Ms. Wellis, when when they said to work with Maryland Rural Water, is that? A resource that we could tap into that we haven't, or how does that work?
We've already, we use Maryland Rural Water all the time, um Jared uses it in the field for processes. We've used it to gather information, the last I heard, they were beginning their own um kinda study. And it would take them a while, I believe that was about. Three or four months ago, so I can touch base with them again, but I don't believe they were done yet.
They were doing their own study of.
I I think it was like municipalities rates and gathering all the information and such. But I need to to double check on that.
Okay, that would be great. Alright, so we are tapping into them already.
And while I'm thinking about it, I know that people, uh commissioners, you're gonna have some more questions for staff. Does anyone have an objection if you do send staff a question that they send a reply to? All five of you, so you all are getting the same. Okay, so we'll 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 start to do that.
I know you had mentioned Commissioner Hoover, the water tap fees, is that something? That would go into this. The other things that you already mentioned, or is that something we wanna look at in the future? Or agenda items is looking at water tap fees?
I think I said I wanna look at in the future, um. The the. The user rate is something that's more important to me.
Okay.
With the water tap fees, there's there's not a substantial amount of development going on at the moment, so if we waited another three, four, five, six months to do that. It's not gonna, it's not gonna make a big deal.
Okay.
I don't think.
Okay.
But but um. I do definitely wanna look at it, you know, and charge them as we as we should be charging them. The actual cost to. Bring on that additional tab.
Okay, so it's definitely something to look at before we bring in.
Any major development.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on that topic before we move? Not topic, but that particular document before we move on?
For for the tap fees, um when we have a new business come online, like the new barber shop. Are they charged um a tap fee to make connection to our water system? Or is that simply because it's already there, it's basically just turning on the service? Yeah, so they would have to um. Provide a fixture count since it's commercial, and if it's equivalent. To what is already there, there are no tap fees, so the barber shop, as far as I'm aware, did not have to pay any tap fees. Okay, thank you.
It's more if there's a change or if there's new development.
Like a change of use, if you're increasing um your water demand, then you may need additional tap fees. Or a lot of the new developments such as the distillery and Federal Stone and those commercial entities, they they have to pay the tap fees, the connections.
Okay, that makes sense.
Has the distillery already paid their tap fees? No, they they're still working through their plans. So we might wanna discuss the tap fees before they move forward too much. Perhaps.
I don't think so.
I wouldn't, now that they've already had their, all their beginning in uh meetings and their their beginning plans have already been approved. I think that would be. Kind of detrimental.
I think we made too much of a commitment. Now, if they drag it out and make another year or two out of, that's another story, but if they move along like there's like they're. Like they've been doing, I think we already made our commitments and gave them our our rates and our prices and. Can't imagine they're using a whole lot of taps probably.
No, I think it's, I think it's five. What we're projecting is five, I think it's on one of these spreadsheets that you have.
I think it would be unfair to, I think it would be unfair to the business to. Hurry up and dive in and change some rates to.
Yeah, you do have the tap fee chart. It's one of your attachments, it says on here, distillery is looking at about five.
Who who um is it the builder's engineer that figure out how many taps are needed or?
Yeah, yes, they provide the town with their anticipated flows. And their fixture counts, and then we go from there and decide, and they calculate how many taps are needed.
Okay. Okay. I'm glad to hear that one can wait.
That's my two cents, that that particular one could wait.
Absolutely, and and the reason I suggest this is in accord with what the mayor and Mr. Hoover are saying, and Mr. Sweeney is saying, the idea that. They've acted in good faith, we've acted in good faith, it would be an act of bad faith. To say, okay, we're changing the rates now that we're moving down the road. Now, also, I would concur that if it does get dragged out, if there's a a longer process. And we're in the process of reconsidering it, sure, and that's if if that happens in the due course of our decision making. But uh if we were to do it now, it would feel. Very anti-business.
Targeted.
Correct, correct.
I think it would be more important before, like I mean, if there was a major annexation and a brand new. Development, but that will probably be a while we ever get there, so.
Well, no pun intended, but we don't foresee anything in the immediate pipeline beyond what's being discussed on North Irish on Irish Town, North. Is that correct?
Right, um and that's just been preliminary discussions, I believe they've purchased the land, but as far as anything else, we're not aware.
Gotcha.
McNair property is, it backs up to Silo Hill. I think it's actually less than, well, I think it's gonna be less than that, but. We haven't had any, he hasn't submitted anything.
Would that, would they already be anticipating the current water tap fees in in their plans, or they're not even there yet?
They're not even there, neither of those developments, Emmett Ridge or um the McNair are anywhere near with their plans, so they. Should not have an expectation of what's current.
Okay. Right. Okay.
Is your Emmett Ridge Tap Forty Eight, is that based off of the current? Outdated site plan?
Yes, but in discussions with them, I think that's about where they're gonna try to fall, give or take, probably be a little bit less.
Gonna have to be, I think it was ten thousand square foot lots there currently. Now you need at least twelve.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be less, probably more like forty to forty five, probably closer to forty.
Yeah, I would think.
With um some floodplain issues and and stormwater management.
I got some opinions about that development too. Phase one.
Should I mark that down for another agenda item, Commissioner Hoover?
I'll bring it up, just a concern.
I know one thing that. Um, I know one thing that I had wanted to ask, and it was something that the commissioners before, it was, it was over the summer. Said we wanted to come back and take a look at charges to the water fund and looking to see home departments and where everybody resides. And does it make sense to keep it that way? Does it still work that way? Should um, adjustments be made? So we do have the the salaries and the home departments listed out, and thank you for, for gathering that, that's giant spreadsheet there.
It is an error. So actually, if you look at fiscal year twenty-four.
Wait, which one are you on?
Uh, the salaries. Salaries, the big chart.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. That's, that's page two, sorry.
Right, on FY twenty-four. Right now, you have only one. Snyder was in forty. Right now, you have one operator with a home department of forty. And then at your February, what would have been heard at the January meeting, but will now be heard in the February meeting, your front office coordinator used to have a home department of forty. And we're proposing to move her to the general fund in department thirteen. That's coming to you in February.
What it, um, shoot, I had it somewhere. List of what the departments are by number.
Thirteen is financial.
Thank you. Do we have an adminis-
Tell you right there. Initial.
Oh, haha, yes. The other side of the spreadsheet, thank you. Sorry about that. That's okay.
I haven't put that there today.
Anticipating this exact question. Do we have, was there ever a department for administrative?
That's basically legislative. Is where we've been putting all our, we don't have anybody that has a home department that's considered administrative. Um, it's never been on. As long as I've been here, there's never been an administrative department. It's always fallen under one of these categories. Cause it's gotta be a, like a budgeted department, and I don't know, and then charging things to that fund.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense, or that department, excuse me. So um, if you look there, it lists out everybody's home department.
Can you, um, why is the town clerk under, why is her home department water?
It's supposed to be fifty under sewer. That was her home department.
Was that the area you were?
Yeah, that one needed to be um, changed. That one have been fifty.
So are you saying the town clerk should be charged fifty-fifty to, to water sewer?
No, she's charged, her home department is fifty. Sewer.
Okay, but why? Why is the town clerk charged all a hundred percent benefits to sewer?
Uh, because she was underwater and we moved her to sewer um, to basically um, protect your sewer, your water fund, which we've consistently done over the last couple of years of, of not putting everything in the water fund. Um, your town clerk has a large amount of duties. When I was the town clerk, my biggest function was the pump station pro- or not the pump station, the wastewater treatment project. So um, a lot of my time was spent in sewer. The town clerk goes all over the place. Uh, as you can see, when you look at your funds, your general fund, your water fund, and your sewer fund, your sewer fund has the largest cash reserves. So that is why uh, several people do have their home department in fifty. Again, just your home, your benefits are solely charged to your home department. Your salary or your pay, rate of pay, as you can see in this chart, a lot of them are spread out through different um, departments. There's only a few that have a hundred percent of their time charged to one department.
I noticed for the town manager, the home department for benefits is also sewer. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to um, charge more people's benefits to sewer simply because we have the budget available. I, I think that's what's happened over the years. We've started taking salaries and benefits out of the water department, and we moved them to the sewer department because there were, the, the, the budget was larger. Um, but I, but I think the home department should really reflect, um, you know, the department where the majority of their work is done. And we can't uh, we didn't use, you know, the water sewer fund, you know, as a slush fund for salaries, especially the state of the water fund as it is currently.
I'm not sure I'd call it a slush fund, but this is the standard that's, like I explained to Commissioner Beaumont, this is a standard that's been set since I've been here. Um, not saying that it was right, not saying that it was wrong, but this is the way it's been done consistently for ten plus years. If the board wants to change it, that's fine. We just need the direction for it. Just keeping in mind, the more that you pull out of your water fund, and the more that you pull out of your sewer fund to put in your general fund, then you're gonna take away from your general fund revenues each year.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, part of the reasons for thirty-six percent increase is because we don't have, you know, the revenue available in, in our water fund to cover the salaries. So if we put people in the home departments where they truly belong, you know, our water fund would look, you know, more like it's supposed to.
You only actually have one person in your home department of water. If the board approves the change in February to move your office coordinator. So in reality, only having one person assigned to the home department probably isn't a realistic capture of where you're spending your money also for the water fund. You should have at least probably two operators with home departments in forty, and then your two supervisors with home departments in sewer.
No, I agree with that.
Representation of what goes on.
No, I'm just talking about the people outside of the water and sewer employees. You know, I, I don't think.
We don't have anybody as of the February meeting outside of the water fund with home department and water. The town clerk was moved to sewer this fiscal year.
Well, I, I think, I think Commissioner Turquest, what you're, you're saying is is there a way that we can look at home departments and where the time is being spent? If, if we were to make changes, what would that look like? But obviously, if you take from one, you know, there's a balance, right? But if we were to act more accurately, reflect, what would that look like? Um, like, I mean, just, for example, Maddie, Maddie, she's in home department sewer. But it says, she had fifty percent or, am I reading that right?
So if you look at Maddie, she had four percent of her time in legislative, twenty-one percent in streets, twenty-three in parks, sixteen in water, and thirty-six percent in sewer. And that fluctuates based off the grants, each time, I, each time she changes based off of what grant she's working on.
So FY twenty-four is only what capturing?
This short period from July first to, to the last la- last payroll.
Okay, and I mean, she does really work hard to get those water consumer grants, so um, I mean, would, would it, what would happen if we were to move something into legislative? What would that look like? Such as? Um, like town manager maybe, town clerk? Into legislative?
So all you would move is your, your benefits. So if you go back to that page here, the second page, the middle page, so say you move your town clerk from her home department of sewer, and you move to her home department to the general fund, um, department ten, you would move her, you'd move twenty thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars to the, the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
Because she would still allocate all her time out where time is spent.
Mm-hmm.
That's what, with the proposal with the uh, the front office coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
Her annual benefits are ten thousand, twenty-three dollars. Her benefits would then move to the general fund under department thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
And then anything that changes your bu- your approved budget by five percent, any lot, any department requires board approval. So any of these changes, if there's an impact more of five percent, then each one would have, require board approval. That's why we were bringing the front office coordinator to the meeting to move her home department.
Oh, because.
How did you explain that? I was wondering why that being brought to legislative?
Yes. Because it impacts it more than five percent.
Correct.
That makes sense. I didn't know that. So, I mean, I I think it, it's something that we can, we can look at, whether or not we, it's a valid solution. But still, I would think any little bit might help, so.
There are some, there are some um, places accounting wise, and it's much more difficult that they, they do their benefits based off of time spent. So if, so for example, um, if you take the town clerk, uh, thirty-five percent of her time was spent in legislative, so then thirty-five percent of her benefits would be put in legislative, twelve percent in financial, three percent building, et cetera, down the road. That is very time consuming. It's, it's kinda difficult to budget for because you don't. We ba- we have our estimates on how we, we budget salaries based off of previous years and then anticipated projects for the future. Me personally, I would rather keep the home department and just budget solely that into their home department for benefits. I think it becomes too confusing and too ki- time consuming to do otherwise.
I, I agree.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I agree. I think the home department should, no matter where, where they spend all their time, some of their time, all their time, part of their time, but I think their home department should pay a hundred percent of their benefits regardless. I think their home department should be based off of the position they were hired, whatever they were hired for. Something within legislative or administration, whatever you call it. The home department would be, what, ten? If they're hired for shorting water, they'd be forty or fifty or split fifty-fifty or whatever. But I think the the, um, the, the benefits a hundred percent should be from the home department um, for everybody.
I agree. I don't think we should change that.
I, I, yeah, I don't think that that was, that was up for discussion. More so, does it make sense to move the home department to, so we can shift the benefits?
Right. Yeah, no, I was just bringing that up. I thought somebody had mentioned it or in one of our discussions, and I might be getting confused. That it was brought up at some point. Um, so if you actually look at this, there's only a couple of employees that, you know, you could potentially look at moving their home department. Um, would be that maybe have some crossover. Uh, your front office coordinator, which we said we'd like to move to thirteen. Uh, your, your town clerk, your your grants administrator. I mean, most of her time is spent water, sewer infrastructure, with a little bit in parks. Uh, your town manager. And then, that's about it.
How, how about if we give everybody a homework assignment?
That works for me.
How about if you all take this printout and kind of come up where you think it's, what it should look like? Does that make any sense? And then get them back to us, and we'll try to do a an analysis of it and just see what.
Yeah, if you tell me, you know, if I, I have an idea of what you're looking at, I can then put it together to show you the impact on, on the different departments.
We're looking at this and having our discussion, I think, I mean, I think you're right. It's just that one, that one position that is, that is all. Um, the rest of them, for what we're, what I think we're all saying is that the home department, the position they were hired for, the home department pays their benefits. But the rest of it is, is just week by week by week, every, every, every pay period, you're putting in whatever the actual hourly cost was for that employee across, for, for each employee across the border, it looks like.
Right.
And, and based on the question you had answered for me before, that, that's, that's, so, so I think that's, it's really just that one position, and now.
Right, number, it'd be there, where you think they belong in the home departments.
Right, well, I, I think it, um, what is it, the um, it's one we're moving, the town clerk, that's the only word. Now I understand why it was on the budget, where, when the agenda last, last meeting, because, because it had a change in the five percent increase.
Right.
When I seen it there, I thought it was the, the idea was that the legislative action had to be taken each time somebody got assigned to a different department.
Right.
But it's not about that, it's about the money.
Correct.
So, so it's only that one position
Okay.
that needs to be edited, it looks like to me. Um, and then the rest is just actual true cost to the department.
So we don't have, I mean, that's, that's a good point. Once you change that, that takes care of.
Puts her, it puts everybody in the, what I believe to be the proper home department, I believe.
Would it?
We're as close to as possible anyway.
So, well, it makes sense. Doesn't it make sense for the town manager to be under sewer though? You get to do so mu- many things.
Is, is the town manager in sewer?
Take, take your pick.
Yeah, the ones you just, um, the ones she just read off are the ones that are under sewer, the town clerk, town manager.
Maybe I'll go back to the homework assignment.
There you go.
I mean, I know that's different than the water fund, that's the sewer fund, but you know, it's, it's not gonna be, it's small beans in comparison, I know, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you look at my, you know, my annual benefits, when I at you know, at fifteen thousand, four eighty-four. It's not gonna, you know, it's not that big of a change to take out of sewer. Um, and I spent a lot of time in a lot of different departments. I, I don't even know where to tell you where I probably should go. Well, I take that back.
Leave that for others, right?
Right.
My intent was just looking at, you know, especially that water fund, how can we alleviate even, even if it's just a tiny little bit, and it looks like with, with that one position, we are addressing that, so. Um, but, you know, in the event, oh gosh, I don't even wanna release it to the universe, that our sewer fund ends up in a bad position. It's not right now. That's something we could revisit at that time.
Yeah, I mean, and these, these home departments really haven't been revisited. Uh, they've been tweaked a little bit here and there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's things that we can reevaluate, you know, every couple of years.
You know, I know our water, uh, uh, I'm sorry, our sewer fund has a positive equity at the end of each year. Um, but if, if we, if we're able to move some of those benefits out of our sewer fund, that will provide more equity at the end of the year that can then go into our cash reserves to be used for infrastructure. Um, so, so it does create a very positive benefit for our enterprise SIP fund at the end of each year.
The, the problem is then that money would come out of the general fund, and if we keep tapping into the general fund, then we're gonna have to raise property tax. So it's, you're, you're, you know, biting your nose off to spite your face, so it's gonna be one place or the other.
And I think that's why originally it was done this way, would be my guess.
I, I think you're right, but I, I, I do believe Commissioner Turquest is correct. I mean, if it's, if, if the shortfall is here, then that's where the shortfall should should, should be resolved, not, not, not move the problem. Um, but right now, the shortfall, well, right now, the sewer fund is able to carry, um, but anyway. I think it is something I probably would bring back up when we look at the um, the agenda item for moving the town clerk position, right?
Uh, your office coordinator.
Office coordinator. Cause I, cause what I'm looking at now is the office coordinator, town clerk, town manager, home office probably should be, I guess you'd say legislative, um, right? Make them all there for the benefit. Make them all there for the benefit purposes, but you're still gonna have your hourly rate wherever they are. So you're, you're not moving a lot of, a lot of money either way. Forty thousand dollars a year.
Is that something that we could look at as a scenario when we looked at that other agenda item or? Or no? Like I was just to see what it would look like. Do we have the money? If we were to change it?
Our audit would have showed us that, but I don't.
So, so. Basically, you want me to look at moving the office manager, the town clerk, and the town manager to?
I think, since we don't have an ad- admin section, it'd be to, to ten legislative.
All three of them? My recommendation for the front office coordinator was department thirteen in general, because she takes a lot of the financial payments and works closely with the accounting department. So at the, at the meeting in February, you're, we can revamp that agenda item to include all three. Um, if, I mean, we can't make a decision tonight, if that's the consensus.
Would we be able to break those down individually, um, too, so that? What if, you know, we look at it and we decide, ah, it doesn't?
So three separate agenda items?
Yeah, yeah, just so that we.
Or you can make the motion. You can make the motion, either way.
Okay, I just wanna.
How about the agenda item just be assignment of front of, um, home offices?
Okay, just so that, uh.
Making one agenda. Thirteen five, maybe that makes sense, because she does, the person in that position is gonna collect, it'll be parking meter money or sewer and water money or deposits on whatever.
Commissioner Donald, Commissioner Sweeney, um, any thoughts?
Proud to re-sign the home o- office for the, uh, town coordinator, the town clerk.
The town manager.
Town manager, not, not the grants coordinator.
I would recommend keeping her where she is, because most of her grants are in your infrastructure. And right now, she's working on the pump station one, which is five and a half million dollars. I think it's an accurate representation.
And she gets no benefits?
Minimal benefits, which she has three thousand six hundred and seven. I think that's her pension, because she still contributes to Maryland pension. I think that's what her, the only benefit she has, so it doesn't really matter to move her, really.
But I think you're right, most of her work is gonna be.
It's in the infrastructure.
Does that make sense then for, to just lock, you know, are we good for the agenda item?
Yeah, I'll reword it when we set it.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions regarding this spreadsheet? I know we had additional questions that came up from some of our, from Commissioner Turnquist, Commissioner Hoover, since they're newer to council. Was there's, or even Mr. Mayor, I know there were some things that we came across, you came across as you took over the position. Is there something specific impressing that you would like to jump to next? I, what I want to also acknowledge as a council is that we probably there's so much information, we're not gonna get through everything in one night. And, um, I would like to prioritize what we, what we look at so that, um, and call additional meetings if necessary. Uh, so we're not here until midnight or one o'clock.
I only have one other thing, based on my questions, I mean, I think I've got most of my answers and clarity, clarity and whatever. The only other thing I had here was, um, I did see on my question number two about items that have been charged to the water department particularly, and I seen where Kathy Urespa- rep- provided me the information that there was a motion made a while back, I don't know when, it tells me here, but that ten percent of the logging money goes to trail improvements, well, due to storms or this, that, or what have you.
That's correct. That was a board decision. Uh, we haven't had any logging money, um, since, uh, two thousand twenty-two. We didn't do any in, in twenty-three, and we don't have anything for this year.
I'm opposed to the ten percent personally, but, um, I mean.
Well, I think it came about because the one logging event caused significant damage to the trail that already was, had a lot of investment in it. It was a board decision. Um, I went up and saw the damage, it was really bad.
Commissioner Donald, did you have background on that, too?
Sure. Sorry, um, I have the hundred day cough here. Mr. Hoover, I understand your concerns, um, of the ten percent, and I was a little surprised myself when that was put forward, but I think it was representing the extent of the damage to the red trail that was more or less, it can't be used anymore. And the intent was, if I understood it at the time, to create a match to, uh, a future grant that we have secured. So I don't know that that's gonna be a permanent ten percent. Um, the other side of it is, uh, I would ask that we do look at, for example, what we're spending in the parks on cutting grass or other maintenance, to keep those open and functioning. And it's a similar idea that it's an amenity for the town. Um, I suspect you might be looking at it as sort of a nice to have versus a need to have. And my thought is, I don't know that we have to have that ten percent moving forward. I would be open to considering a lesser sum. But I would like there to be some funding in place, um, as we move forward in order to address uh, maintenance and promotion. And promotion would be the idea of, uh, getting events to put beds and heads, for example, at the, uh, the sleep in and put people into the restaurants and the distillery. So, uh, I hope the intent is not to abandon it, but rather to, uh, give consideration to modifying it.
I don't know about abandonment of it or not, or, or yes or no at the moment, but, uh, I'm a, the reason I say I'm opposed to now, if it was a one-time thing, that I don't have an issue with it. Because it doesn't, it, it was meant to spend some, some of those monies to, uh, make a repair to something outside of the trails, um, um, control. I hear what you're saying, but it's, I mean, to me, the the trail is one, is one water land, so, um, the water, the water enterprise fund property. So the trail being up there is, is fine. I don't know what it brings to the town or not. I mean, I know a lot of, a lot of things going on up there, just that, where, other can't say I participated in it, but, um, but I know it does, it does do some things, but, um, I don't know who all uses it, but at the same time, I think I could justify saying that, that the, um, that the trail, parks and rec money could be used to lease part of that property and contribute to the watershed versus taking from the watershed. And that's my only real issue, that for it to be taken from the watershed funding is my concern or my issue. So seriously, if it was only that one-time thing, I wouldn't, it wouldn't have brought it up, but if it's a ten percent every time we do login, that's, that's, uh, I don't think it's, I don't think, I don't think it's a fair appropriation expenditure of the water, water, watershed money. I don't think that's its intended enterprise fund use, intended use.
I don't know how to wrap that one up. Leave that one hang.
I don't think we're having a back and forth, and we were just discussing it, but I think it's, it's a discussion that's welcome and, you know, I would suggest maybe we move forward.
The only thing I would suggest of is, if a log- logging contract would come forth again, then the board can make the determination at that point if they're gonna allocate any money or not. Uh, like I said, we didn't have any logging last year, and we don't have any scheduled for this year, or for this fiscal year.
The, I'll, I'll jump in, and Mr. Hoover, this is part of it that, um, there was grant funding that provided the trails, that was, that built the trails. It, it didn't really cost the town anything out of pocket at the time, other than like the management of the paperwork connected to it. Um, I was asked by the mayor and board to visit the trails and look into the pre-forestry program, where I did meet with our, our, our paid forestry consultant that the town paid for. And I was advised by staff as a result of that conversation to literally go and mark where the trail would be, so there would be like a safety, some protection for the trail. And what actually occurred was the, the, the staffer at the time who's on or with us, um, was advised by another party that they were gonna use that as their alignment to access where the, where, uh, the parcels where they were cutting. And as a result of that, heavy machinery went over and, and just made it impassable. To the point, though. Um, yeah, I, I like what the staff, what staff is suggesting, and I'm not opposed to what you're saying. Um, I also do know that, you know, there's that idea that it's also under easement with the Department of Natural Resources. And they were very much on board with getting people out there for recreational purposes also, so. Um, and, and I just see it as a balance. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
But, a- a- as I said, I mean, if they done damage to it, I mean, of course, that should have been part of the login agreement. You damage it, you fix it. If they, if they put some big ruts in there, they should have fixed that, but however, hindsight's twenty-twenty. It's just that if it had been that one time, let's fix it, let's do something, I'd have been a hundred percent on board, but to have it to be on ongoing of watershed logging money that may or may not even be at the trails, that we still spend money. We, watershed fu- resource monies on trails unrelated to any damage or f- future, future, you know, issues or have you. So, but again, you know, I'm not, you know, it's just one man's opinion that it's watershed money and watershed money should stay with watershed and the enterprise fund as it was intended to do. Now you can move on. On this ten has more.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to talk about some of the, the funds or the other accounts or anything like?
Yeah, just, just real quickly, your, your banking information, we were able to, to gather everything there and just to let you know what we've, we've done over the last, uh, couple of months, that, uh, is gonna have a positive impact. The, uh, sweep account, uh, we were able to in, uh, move that and get that into a much higher interest rate. I think we went from uh, three point two five to four point five nine. So when you do that with uh, eight million dollars, it, it should increase our income by eight thousand dollars a month in interest, so that's, that's gonna be really nice. Uh, also, the Woodsboro bank account, or the Woodsboro CDs, uh, we moved those, uh, they were getting very, very, very low, uh, interest rate, and we were, they moved it into another, uh, a different account for, uh, interest rate of four point five percent. So that's gonna be another million dollars there that we're going to, uh, uh, get a much better interest rate on. And the last thing that I'm, I'm gonna do probably tomorrow, if you look at the PNC, uh, money market, uh, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, it's, uh, it's earning two point eight four percent, and we can get that moved into an account that'll, uh, uh, also give us four point, uh, five percent interest on a short term. Right now, short-term CDs are doing much better than long-term. So if we, there would be something there on that, uh, that we would need that, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand for, uh, we'll probably, uh, put it in a CD for, for ninety days. I can't see anything happening in, in three months that we would need to pull that out. Uh, if we would need to pull it out, we can pull it out of the general fund and then repay that once the CDs are up. So I'll probably move that tomorrow. So we should see, uh, uh, quite an increase in, uh, interest, uh, income over the next coming year.
You, you said it was a, a short-term, meaning, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure, it should be a short-term CD, three-month CD, ninety-day CD. Uh, they're, they're earning much higher interest rates than the long-term. Have no idea why, and the bank can't tell you why, but the, the short-term CDs right now are, are doing fairly well.
Mr. Mayor, cause nobody's buying long terms. What, what do you want to do with the extra money that we're going to be? You foresee doing with the extra money?
Well, I was thinking raises for the commissioners. No, it's, um, that, that, that'll be something we'll have to try to figure out, uh, when it comes to budget time. I really don't have a plan. I, I just moved it quick to, so we could get more money coming in, so I, I don't have a plan for it. So we'll be taking.
That money goes into the general.
General fund, right. And, uh, that leads us into what next month's workshop will be setting priorities, so maybe you guys will answer your own question. When, as you set your priorities for projects.
That's just the, uh, it's, the interest is being moved into the general fund.
Your interest will stay in your CD.
Right, well, yeah, the CD interest will stay, but the, uh, for the swap, that should go into that ca- account.
Yeah, the.
Right, the eight thousand dollars a month should go into the, the, uh, general fund.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Right, right.
And that's what, one of the things that you'll see when we, we do talk about the budget, these interest rates, while they are terrible for most people, it has been good for the town, because we do have, um, a good return on our interest rates and have extra monies coming in.
I have a quick question. For the eight million cash reserves, it's in our water and sewer SIP, SIP budget. Does the interest on that eight million go back into the enterprise SIP fund as well? You want me to ask again? So we have eight million dol- is, is the answer no, or it didn't make sense?
Yes, if you could say, if you could say it again.
Well, we have eight million dollars in cash reserves, right, for our enterprise SIP fund. So the interest that we earn on that eight million, does that interest go back into the enterprise SIP fund where the cash reserves are currently?
There's not eight million in the enterprise fund alone, is it?
No, no, that, that eight million is everything together.
Well, I'm looking at, um, page thirty-two of the FY twenty-four budget, and it says cash reserves, and this is the page that follows our enterprise SIP fund, and it shows cash reserves estimated at eight million. And this is our SIP fund for the enterprise fund.
Is that on one of the, um?
It's in our budget.
Is that, is that assets, or is that just?
Cash reserves. Page thirty-two of the FY twenty-four budget.
I don't have my calculator with me. I can't answer that.
Yeah, how about, how about if we, uh, work on that one tomorrow and we'll send that answer out to everybody? Uh, so we can get you the right answer instead of trying to rush through that. You okay with that?
Up for that, yeah, that's fine, of course.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I do, I do have a quick question, too. Um, with that, um, two hundred and fifty thousand money market, does it just hang out there until we decide what we wanna do with it, or what was?
Well, we yes, it'll just hang out there because it can be used for, for anything. It, it was, it was a fund that was left over from making, uh, payments on some projects. And the projects all got paid off, and the two hundred and fifty thousand was, was left over. So it's two hundred and fifty thousand for projects, but since we don't have anything planned in this year's budget, I figured if we get invested for for at least a couple of months, it would, it'll, it'll get us some more interest.
Sure, so we can talk down the road. Yeah, okay. In the, any other questions, comments for now, um, commissioners? Concerns? All right, I know there's a lot more we can dive into. We're almost at nine o'clock, and I wanna be mindful of everybody's time. Mr. Mayor, is there something else that should definitely hit? Mr. Mayor, is there something else that should definitely hit before we?
No, please, please try to dissect this as, as much as you can, get us your questions, we'll get you the answers, we'll get them, the, the questions and answers out to, to all five of you. And I think we're going to be able to, to find some good stuff and be able to solve some of our issues and help with your projects that you have upcoming.
A question for staff and I have zero expectation to answer for it now, but regarding the project reserve funds that were available unexpectedly, the $250,000. Is there wisdom in trying to find what fund it originated with?
I already tried.
Really?
I, I think back as my, I spent my day researching old ordinances, old minutes and I cannot find anything on the 250. I believe what, what Mayor Davis has said is correct, that it was part of a, a larger project and it was excess funding that might have been received that was, was left over in the money market, but I can't find anything concrete to say such.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
After we digest the information and thank you to all staff who pulled that information together, because it was, it was a lot. I would imagine at some point we might have additional questions. And then, you know, maybe depending on the, the amount of questions we have, we can look at either bringing it up at a meeting or schedule another workshop if needed, just to dive into it.
Sure, because I know, I know I have some questions, so I'm hoping everybody goes.
Okay, all right, so it's, it may be worthwhile to look at a part two. Okay, sounds good. But we already have our other workshops scheduled for priorities coming up in February. Yes. Okay.
Right, and again, that's going to be to cover any planning for projects, anything special you have, so make your, you know, more homework. The school teachers give me bad looks when I say about homework, but more homework with, with listing your projects and starting to prioritize and things like that, so.
Does that include staff's recommended projects also?
Oh heavens, yes, we can't leave staff out. Yeah.
I got a new one.
Okay. I lost my. Yes, please, thank you. We're in my file. Thank you.
While you're looking, I, I wanted to thank the town staff for all of the information they sent us today. I mean, it was a lot and I know this took days probably to put all this information together and I do appreciate it. I haven't reviewed it all yet, but I do appreciate the time they took to put all of that information together. I know it's a lot, so I wanted to say thank you for that.
Yes, very much so, thank you. And I'm sure it was a team effort and it'll give us, as Mayor Davis said, lots and lots of homework to review. But you know, it's, i- if anything, it's going to put us more on the same page so that there's a, a better understanding and clarification as far as what's going on behind the scenes, so. At this point, did we, I know the agenda says to adjourn, do we need to?
We need to set February's agenda.
Yes.
Please.
Set February's agenda and. So do we want to go ahead and move to that now?
Again.
Is that, is that agreeable? Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, for the February 5th, February 5th?
Yes.
Yes. Town meeting, we can add for consideration, move the home department of the office coordinator from department 40 to department 13. The home department of the town clerk from department 50 to department 10. And the home department of the town manager from department 50 to department 10. Number two, for consideration approval of the pump station dedication agreement with rudders. Number three, for consideration approval of three-year contract with EOS for maintenance of Silo Hills Stormwater Basin as required by the MS4 permit. Number four, for consideration approval of the updated rules and procedure for Board of Commissioner meetings to include provisions for closed session and workshops. I'll add, I, I'm not sure how to word this one. Number five, discussion to allow 24-hour pack parking on West Main Street. Is that?
Commissioner Turnquist, you wanted to look at the parking ordinance as it relates to West Main Street, correct?
Correct, where, um, where no meters exist on west and east. I think it's the way it's worded in the ordinance.
That's, that's right. Discussion to allow 24 part, 24-hour parking.
You could just say Main Street.
Or do we want to just revisit the current?
What's the ordinance number?
I won't, I, I don't have an ordinance number yet.
Review that ordinance number or whatever.
Yeah, I can give it to you once.
So it's town code 1012090 is the town code for that section.
Yep, very good. Pretty, you were on it.
Can, thank you. Can we make it a discussion only item because of the quick turnaround between this meeting and February 5th?
Absolutely.
We have a lot, a lot on our plate right now, so we can just, discussion to allow 20, 24-hour parking as it relates to town code 1012.090. That sound okay?
Perfect.
And that wouldn't take a public hearing because it's not changing.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I also wanted to have a discussion or put something on the agenda regarding, like, what do we want as a council to recommend to staff as far as a schedule? If, this was something that the mayor asked me and I was like, well, I don't want it to just be me. It, is there, do we have a recommendation moving forward to, for staff as far as what our schedule should be for advertising town meetings, frequency, lead time, where it's posted and such, just so that they have clarification, there's consistency because I, they're not mind readers. So if we could just come up with a schedule of what we would like to see? No, anybody?
I don't understand what's being, is it a question of staff taking time off in relationship to meetings or?
Oh, no.
I don't understand what.
No, no, no. All right, so if.
Advertising of town events, I think you're saying.
Yes, advertising town events, town meetings. Is there a standard we want to ask them to please post it a week ahead of time and make sure it's on the website, make sure it's on Facebook, word, like word, that way we're not, so like if one time, we don't have, you're not pulled in 100 directions, that there's just a standard that they can refer to, so that it's not just one person saying, can you advertise more or you advertise too much or whatever, that there's a standard, a minimum standard. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I mean, I can certainly provide feedback, but I would much rather have a council feedback on that as well.
And this is for a discussion item at the February meeting, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah. Just in discussion. Anything else?
I would put it under admin business.
That works.
And what, what do you, what do you want to call it? Discussion.
Advertising town events? For town meetings?
You're trying to create a policy type thing or something?
I don't know if it needs to be a policy, I just know that.
Maybe just a standard operating guideline, so they, so they know what, what everybody's expecting.
Yeah, so that way I don't, I, I don't email and say, hey, are you going to, and they're like, yes, I'm, we're scheduling here, here and here, that way we know, everybody knows what the schedule is, so we don't feel the need, I don't feel the need to, or anyone feels the need to bug them because they know this is the schedule of where we're going to post our town meetings and, and such. I'm confusing everybody, aren't I?
No, I got it.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I think you said it right. That's okay.
I think you have it. I'm, I'm looking at what the mayor said regarding standard operating procedures. I'm just trying to think of the phrasing, but I think.
Kind of guideline, they're really looking.
Maybe a guideline, yeah.
Yeah.
Guidelines related to the advertisement of town meetings.
Meetings and events.
And events. To assist town staff.
Yes.
Or to guide town staff.
Right.
Yes. That's it.
Just so they know what, what you five are expecting, where you want them advertised.
Okay.
And we can, we'll do it the same way every time and life will be good.
Commissioners, was there anything else that you wanted to consider for the agenda that was not already mentioned?
I think your February plate is full, so I'm going to wait till March, but. One thing that we got in one of our packages, I think Serena sent, Serena sent it to us was the meeting, I guess you call it the reading rules, policy.
The, the rules of procedure?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I don't know, maybe have a. Understood that.
So we. Well, it's coming up at the February meeting for, to include provisions for closed session and workshops. That, that document was written by our town attorney and basically I, I think that's the one that.
So, so that document will be part of that discussion then?
Yeah, yes, the updates.
Okay, well, it takes all one of them. And the other one's just going to be down the road to get water rates. I do want to look at those, but definitely not in February.
Definitely not in February, it's too soon. Okay.
Thank you.
So. Is there a motion to accept the agenda? As the addition as presented?
I make a motion to accept the February 12 town meeting agenda as discussed.
Is there a second?
February 5th.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I modify my motion to February 5th.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present, Commissioner Turnquist is present via Zoom. I don't know if we need to specify that or not. And from there, I guess we can adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnquist, did you say aye?
Yes, aye.
Oh, sorry. Motion carries five to zero, the meeting is adjourned at 9:05 PM.